I guess we'll do a short uh Records Commission. Meeting and then we'll jump into our pledge in the uh. We'll kick off the uh Records Commission meeting by roll tall vote.
Mister Roper?
Yes.
Mister English?
Yes.
Mister Cheney?
Yes.
Um is there a motion for approval of the Records Commission minutes from February the sixth twenty twenty three?
Uh second.
Vote.
Yes.
Yes. And then we also need a motion to uh dispose of records.
Um I move to approve R C dash two, the Perry Township Record Retention Schedule updated two thousand twenty four.
Second. Vote.
Yes.
Yes. A motion to adjourn.
Mister Roper?
Yes.
Mister English?
Yes.
Mister Cheney?
Yes. We will conclude the uh annual Records Commission. Uh I will call the order of the regular session uh March fourth meeting, first order of business always is pledge allegiance. Uh next order of business would be approval of the. February twenty first meeting, you have a motion for that?
Yes.
I make the motion.
Second.
Uh vote?
Yes.
Yes. And I will abstain since I unfortunately missed. Uh public comment period, Brookside.
Um our Easter egg hunt is on March thirtieth. At Brookside Elementary. And I will be here tomorrow night for our meeting.
Wh- when is that again, Easter egg hunt starting?
The thirtieth, March thirtieth, Saturday.
What time is it?
You know, I should know that. Um ten o'clock.
Where are the Easter bunny clocks?
What size are they?
Anything else for Brookside?
No.
What else? Uh. Nothing, no report. I've got a rebel.
Oh, I do.
Or do you have something?
I have one thing for, you know how they do National Night Out, they're not doing that anymore, they're doing Neighbor's Night Out. The cost to use Nashville Night Out logos have skyrocketed, so they're looking at sometime in September to do a Neighbor's Night Out instead. So.
It's too bad.
Yeah.
Cost to use logos.
Yeah, so if you participate in National Night Out, you have to pay your signage and other things.
Can you just use the name?
No.
That's.
So they, that's why they changed the Neighbor's Night.
It's like the Super Bowl.
Yeah.
I know.
Yes.
Okay. Uh Sheriff's Office.
Just happy to be here. Just, just enjoying your company.
Well, you're ha- we're happy you're here. Um Employee of the Year, will you set the line item for that?
Sorry.
Sorry. For me, I mean, I mean, you don't want him to say.
Well, whoever.
Would you like to say this?
It was for the actual for twenty twenty three, right?
Yes.
Um first of all. You know, we always want to try to recognize um our, our staff whenever possible, and they do that. Fabulous job each every day, I mean, they are truly our ambassadors when it comes to our residents. Uh folks that we do business with. Um associations that we work closely with and collaborate with. Um and so uh they're, they're out there forefront uh showing how good government can work. Um small places. Big accomplishments, so uh and there is one particular individual that is out there every day. Uh promoting the, the message uh of Perry Township and the good services and programs that we offer. And um he has done a fabulous job, especially over the last twelve months. Really pushing out our message and making sure uh that we have a positive. Uh outlook on things and that we're able to obviously uh give people an opportunity. Uh to share their thoughts as well, so uh Luke, come on up.
Well, you can all get in there too.
Oh, get a, get a picture with.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, ready? Okay.
Yes, there we go.
Want everybody?
Yeah.
Here, I can stand right in front of all the tall people. All right, thanks. Excuse me, hello. Bye, thank you.
We can jump ahead to zoning without chat, I think. Let's uh go on to zoning.
Uh under old business, Henderson Road Development, um we are still awaiting a signature from the city of Columbus. Uh we have the Franklin County Commissioner's signature, we have presented to the city of Columbus. That the county commissioners have signed off on the resolution. And it has the modification agreement that allows water sewer to the back parcel of Henderson Development. So everybody is on board now except for the city of Columbus, but the city of Columbus now has all the information that they need. To execute that agreement, I don't have a date or any from them when they expect to. But I don't foresee any other major delays on that. Have not heard from the developer as to what their timeframe might be, but. All we're waiting on is now the city Columbus's uh signature on the uh resolution that grants the uh. The uh. The, the package that allows sewer water to that back portion. Um the Brookside cottages um we have a, another obstacle thrown in front of the developer. Although a minor one, the uh lot split, which is being done as a lot line adjustment. Um was it, was not approved because. They had to do some research to make sure there was an agreement with the city of Columbus to provide sewer services to the parcel. And there is an agreement, but it was signed tonight in two thousand twenty one. And so the county now wants. The description of the easement is going to be granted to provide the sewer to the connection on the golf course. And provided that it doesn't go across more than one property boundary. Once they reviewed the description, then they are going to allow that lot split approval. And the lot split will then be done and developer won't own the property. But I talked to the uh, the uh engineer today, they are in a process of. Creating that easement in the description to send to the county to show them it's only crossing one part. That's their requirement, so it's probably a, a month delay, but moving forward. Um and then under new business, we discussed this at the last meeting, but I don't think that we. Entertained the motion that we need to entertain to modify the uh exterior property maintenance code to include our. Dead Animal Resolution, so we need to have a motion to do that as it indicates there.
So I move.
I think we have two motions to consider.
Yeah. So move to the adoption of those, is it in, is it in the package?
You have, yeah, it's right at the end of, you can read it in one motion, it's right at the end of the agenda, last page.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah. And then onto the nets.
Yeah, 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 right. All right, so I'm, so I'm moving to dispense with the requirement that it um. That this resolution amending the Perry Township property maintenance code be read on two. Separate days and hereby authorize the adopter the resolution upon a first review.
Uh I'll second vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And then I also moved the adoption of resolution amended Perry Township property maintenance code.
All second vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, I got it for you.
Next order of business would be Road Department and you want to move into our speaker right away? Do you have something else? Let's see much longer chess moving.
Yeah.
I can use a fire report.
Yeah.
Do you want to do that?
Uh nothing from Arlington yet, but Worthington for the month of February had twenty seven calls for services in Perry. Last month, busy month for the word.
Want to do a place too, or?
Uh we'll just do right, we'll just jump into the road, speaker, and the board is yours. You want more look for my P through answering questions you guys might have on the uh two uh proposals submitted?
The uh.
You said that before.
Wait, wait, why did we got eight inches that far?
I think we've got like ten inches since he said something.
The, the only question I had was, um you know, I saw the demo, the existing salt barn instructor. In concrete foundation, what about the existing storage?
Both of those buildings are included on.
Okay. Cause I, I, under the one, it said um under easy done construction, it was just demo, all I saw was. Demo the existing, I didn't see where they were.
I've spoken to him extensively in the other sense of scope of work, the, I also have an email from indicating that. Everything in that scope of work has been covered, um we've asked for a couple of clarifications, there was something in regards to the um. Uh the dumpster pad.
Yeah.
Uh it, he had reference that he would do it in, in asphalt. Uh we've since went back and asked him to go ahead and include that be in concrete, with the price that he gave us, he's agreed to that. Um so a- all that stuff that's in the scope of work. Uh that we require, he's agreed that all that is included in his scope.
Okay.
For that price.
Any questions?
No, I, I just wanted to make sure that it was concrete, not asphalt and price can go up and.
Yeah, so there is some asphalt on there, um but the salt barn. As well as the concrete pa- um the dumpster pad are both concrete.
Anything else in the road department? Uh what?
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I just mentioned, um I did get a couple quotes back from two different financing. Options and those are in your packet. Thank you, sorry.
Uh. Still in there. I entered today the resurfacing. From uh, I received a quote from the county today from the resurfacing of. Blackstone Drive, Gray, well, Gray Rocks, Mark Wood, Mark Haven.
So what's the next step?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna. I'm so sorry.
Financing or what, like what?
To move forward with easy done.
I think we need an action to do that.
Right, yeah, we need.
I mean, the financing, we want to talk about the financing portion.
Well, I mean. Heartland obviously is quoting that much higher APR because they didn't give us a tax incentive rate that Huntington did, if we want to go that route, um. I, I mean, we can, that's a separate conversation, right?
Right.
Ready to move forward.
But, so let me ask you a question, can we approve easy done, start to work on the drawings, get everything like that and? Like we've still gotta get the drawings done, they gotta get permitted, we gotta get, like, there's a lot of work that we gotta get going. And we can be figuring out the financing.
Right.
Aspect of it, then how?
In parallel.
In parallel.
So what I, in that case, what I would suggest is you allow me and, and send me an email, let me know to go ahead and, and award, and intend to award.
Yeah.
I won't give him a, an award letter per se until we make sure we have the funding figured out.
Okay.
But I can send him an intent to award and that, that'll go ahead and release him to uh potentially start getting all his paperwork, um. Uh his funding and this or that nature, all of that stuff, um. I guess.
But we could. I mean, it's, cause he broke out. They, they broke out like the permit drawings and all that other stuff, so we could say, hey, we're gonna release you on this.
Okay.
And even, and again, even if it's not funded, we could still pay for that portion, so he's, he feels like. Okay, I'm uncovered, I'm not gonna like, and then all of a sudden project dies, so we can cut him loose on that.
Okay.
And at least say, hey, we're gonna award like the tip going on the draw, the drawing part of it. Uh I don't know if that has to be two separate motions to just approve the, the funding, but then we, gives us time to figure out the financing aspect of it and. He, he knows he's covered on the work that we're letting him proceed on.
By scope of work to show the both buildings and all of that?
No, I mean, as long as, as long as it's covered, uh and you guys are comfortable that it's covered, I, that, that's.
It's covered, that both of those are getting demoed, he's, and he's taking the electric out of the one. Um and then just put in a uh like a breaker box.
Yeah.
On the end, and then the demo obviously of the salt barn um will be included there, so then we could build a new one. That's right, um.
So why don't, why don't you want to make? First note of his proposal was execute all work, first of the work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's in the scope of work.
Okay, so your recommendation is easy done. Um. I'm trying to think, all right, permits, plans and fees are, is fifteen thousand, right? All right, is there anything that we have to be done? Before those permits, plans and fees to get going on that?
For this particular project, some period as a design build.
Yeah.
No, but there is some stuff that's going to, for example, the sub medals that he needs to present from his architect. All that stuff will come in later, but it's part of that fifteen thousand.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, like, could we make a motion and say, hey, we have, we're.
Not to exceed.
Intent to proceed, so you could say, hey, you got the job, but what we're gonna do is we're gonna approve. The design, the, the design, the permit, plans and fees for fifteen thousand, so it's approved.
Right.
And then. That gives us, he, he gets moving and he knows he's gonna get paid for that, and then we can move forward on.
With the construction.
Yeah.
Does it need to include this one appear to, the bid includes all general condition and then so the plan, this one as well?
Uh.
Yeah, why don't I, why don't I just approve twenty?
Okay, not to treat twenty.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'm see if I can do this. All right, so I'm gonna first um motion um. To award the bid to, to uh easy done. Construction.
Second, sorry. Vote.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. And then I'm gonna make another motion that says we're gonna authorize um the, the bid, uh the general condition and then scope. Or complaints and the permits and plans fees totaling twenty thousand dollars. Uh I so.
Second. Vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll figure out all the financing.
We'll be this Friday, right?
Yeah. Okay, cool.
Um police. Uh resurfacing, uh I received the Franklin County's uh estimate. This afternoon, included it in the, the Dropbox, um. Their estimate without uh Gulfport would be a. Two hundred and twenty-four thousand ninety-nine dollars and forty cents, um. That is with, they've quoted Sammy in this price. They said they would use fiber mat if. Other townships came in interested in fiber mat before this goes out. There's no interest right now in. Fiber mat. From other townships, I, like on the side of their estimate, I've estimated. Off of a previous quote from Strauser, um. Their pricing and added twenty percent, um to kind of show what, we went out to Strauser. And got them to uh quote the fiber mat. The problem with. Strauser, then we have to coordinate, um we could have some downtime between the milling before the fiber mat. Gets for down and then resurface, it won't be like the normal schedule through the county, um. There could be a delay, um.
I'm cool with it. I, I, it's just, to me, it's a totally superior product. I am totally cool with waiting, um it because it's just, I mean, the proof's in the pudding. I, the only thing I, is if it's gonna be twenty percent more, then I think we need to back on, you know, like, cause don't you have a certain. Number every year that you're trying to hit?
I've been trying to keep around two twenty, two thirty.
Yeah.
Resurfacing, um.
So we need to lose.
Around two forty-four.
Yeah.
Um. On this list. Where to cut off would probably be newcomer and or Blackstone to keep. Coming out from these.
Hit on newcomer, so if you need to cut newcomer, cut newcomer and to get you where you need to be.
This is that whole Blackstone, those little cords. Yeah, that's why I said Blackstone, if we did the other two ports back there and came out.
And the other, the other reason why I would cut newcomer out, um is, we'll talk, we'll talk of a little bit about that.
So we cannot get a bid from Franklin County unless other townships also want.
It's the, they pushed the Sammy, which is. It's an emulsion and chips.
Right. But I mean, just even with one, assuming we're the only one, we're truly not. I'm not questioning you, I'm just trying to understand the concept that we can't get a bid. When we met with uh the office last year, they were very clear about that, that they would, they would consider that there are other townships interested. But if you weren't gonna do any layoffs. But my question, it wasn't last year, wasn't it Ju- uh Genoa that used the Sammy, I was wondering?
You know, we used the.
I, I mean, the, the fiber.
The fiber mat.
And I was just wondering if we could maybe team up with a different, I mean, I could call Paul and see if, or you could call their superintendent. Just to see maybe if we teamed up, that might help the cost, I don't know.
What's sharing them, are they doing anything?
I'm not exactly sure what their, their work is.
Or Worthington.
I mean, this is more a matter of, of scheduling.
It's, it is, it comes down to scheduling.
So, I mean, I don't think that, it's not gonna be perfect. Can't imagine that we're gonna get fiber mat right in there at the time that we would have gotten Sammy, but if we're willing to. Put up with a little dust. And a little waiting, then I think it's, at the end of the day, it is, Andy is correct, it's a superior. E- even the, even county uh engineer, when they say things like. Uh Sammy is almost as good, or it could be as good.
Yeah.
Or, so you, you get the, it's, it's never, it's as good or better. It's just, it's a substitute, and they like it for, I think, what they see. The performance wise as well as cost, and I think they're factoring it costs a lot in this, the fact that they're, they're the ones pushing that.
Yeah, I mean, talking to the county, just like last year, they believe it's as good as fiber. We don't believe, I don't believe it's as good as fiber mat. Uh on these low traffic cords. It might, as well, it might produce like fiber mat. We're not gonna have the traffic, we're on course.
I'd rather be sure.
I just look at it.
Listen, the board wanted fiber net. Question that we're gonna do this, it's a matter of scheduling and being willing to.
That we could partner with, because obviously we're looking at a twenty percent, potentially twenty percent increase over costs if we.
Well, that's uncrossed, crossed across the board on everything right now.
Oh, yeah, I'm just wondering, like, if there's another township that's willing to do it, then maybe there's a. Well, that's, yeah.
And we, we just don't want them leaving oh Central Ohio, I mean, they're coming to a Central Ohio, which I assume there's probably one or two.
Well, when I, I, I spoke with Strauser today, they're putting together an official quote. Um and they have coordinated before with the county. Um and they'll, they'll try to coordinate as close as they can, um.
But they won't, they won't leave, they won't go to West Virginia.
Well.
And leave us hanging.
No, it'll be on the schedule, but it depends on. When we get it milled, where they're at, how soon they can get back.
Well, we need to be in front of the schedule.
We need to work with the county. On their scheduling as well, for the milling and.
And we need to be in front of the schedule, and listen. I don't, you know, they talk about it as, you know, the clock, you know, we're gonna go clockwise around the county, but the point is, is that. W- we need it done early, early, so that it opens that window. I would, I would rather not have that window closed, be so tight that we miss out totally versus. Dealing with a little dust for a month and a half or whatever, so, or two months, so. As long as we communicate to the residents why we're doing this.
Yeah.
I think they'll, they'll understand, they'll appreciate that, so.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Without the, the Sammy on their bid, it comes to one, one hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and forty cents. Do you wanna approve that tonight, or you wanna wait?
Do I need to get the? We can approve based on the increasing cost?
Yeah.
Right, I mean, if we're gonna have a additional on top.
So are, are you ask, asking us to simply approve?
Yeah, milling in the asphalt, so try to.
Two parts.
Yeah, and then add the Sammy, I'm expecting the Sammy. Coming in close to the sixty-one thousand. Uh three hundred and thirty-six.
But if we have to make a decision to back off one of the streets on the milling and.
When do you?
I'll just wait.
When do you need?
That's, that's what I'm trying to understand, don't we?
Okay, let's do it at the next.
Big Mark and Wade, he was kind of rushing this out, I think, today to get it to me.
Okay, that's right. We, we got.
On the agenda, I. With the uh board's approval to bring the twenty twenty-four intergovernmental work agreement for Franklin Soil and Water. To provide a grant, an amount of a thousand dollars. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And then uh, the last item I have, it's not on there, I need board's approval to. Sell the nineteen ninety-four spectrum diesel generator. I'd like to list it on Gulf deals and. Get it out of this area.
Summon.
Second.
Vote.
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
Police.
Uh under old business, uh with the help of Beth, I uh revise some of the reserve program, made some updates, added a cost list. Uh just once here, if there's any questions uh from I submitted before.
So.
Go ahead.
Um.
Before you do.
Yeah.
Is this a first reading?
Maybe.
Because I, I have a couple of questions, but.
Okay.
Okay, okay. So, in the reserve program, I know it's gone through some different iterations here. I know the concern is the training, there's sixteen hours, tell me where I go wrong. There's this requirement of sixteen hours of training per month.
Sixteen hours of work.
Yeah, sixteen hours, not from a training as twenty-five CPT, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so does that sixteen hours of work, how does that work with your training? Because here's what I don't get into a situation where what we're doing with reserves is kind of what we're doing with part timers. We're, we're training them to train them.
Right.
Kind of thing, and I don't wanna get into that, there's no reason for us to do the same thing in the reserve program. I, listen, I'm very supportive of the reserve program. I guess it's the devil's in the details, that's the question. So my concern is that we spend all our time training people and that's all we get out of it.
There, we're revamping a few things as we speak. But nothing is ready yet.
You wanna share?
No. Not yet, we're, we're revamping how we do summer part-time and how we're going to do summer reserve.
So should we? Wait on this while you're revamping?
No, I'm asking for the reserve program because we have one. Actually, we have maybe two now that we wanna move over to the reserve status from part-time.
From part-time?
Yes.
I think the concern though, Steve, is the, the proposal is written that they can come to meetings and.
As part.
Training is part of their sixteen hours.
Absolutely, a- and I get that, and but we're, we're working to. I've tasked Lieutenant Forsyth with more of a monitoring on how we're gonna do things, and we're working with. And working with a couple of the chiefs on how to change a few of those things and how that works. As far as reserves and part-time, how we're going to move that forward, as far as reserve, they'll understand that when they're hired. That sixteen hours has to be on top of some of the training, we're not gonna make it mandatory, because there are times. They have to get their CPT done, which is mandatory by the state, but they still need to do sixteen hours a month.
So out of the sixteen hours you're required to work, how many, how many do you, are you thinking that they're gonna be training versus working?
Well, the hours per year is twenty-four hours per year. That's mandatory by the state.
Training.
Right, twenty-four hours per year is, is continuing professional training.
Yeah.
Everything else would be more. So they, they're required to do twenty-four hours a year. For the state for training.
Right.
Which can count towards their sixteen hours per month, but they have to do sixteen hours per month. As time on job, on the job.
So that's two, so basically it breaks down to two hours a month. Right?
For training.
Twenty-four.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
But we have.
I, I think what I, you know, I think we're, it, to me is like, if, if we're gonna have reserve, like, we need. I, I would say that we gotta get the most bang for a buck and that would be them working.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
And not, you know, so. So how is this, how, how is this gonna reflect? The changes that you're gonna make to, like, how, how, how is this gonna reflect in here, in here? Or is it?
As far as like.
Like what, like what percent, like, is it just gonna say that, you know, uh, that they're gonna have twenty-four hours of training a year? But everything else is gonna be sixteen hours of work?
No, it, so they, they're required to do sixteen hours per month. That's state law, that's our policy, they can do more, obviously. However, they have to do their CPT, so if they only do. Two hours a month of training, they still have fourteen hours that they have to, they have to work.
Right.
Yeah, so way we do, we have blocks of time where we have, we partnered with Clinton Township to do some of the CPT, that's a four-hour block.
Yeah.
That is mandatory training, they'll have to attend that, so that month, if we have reserves at that time.
Yeah.
Whatever we have, they would have to tend that four hours, and that could count towards their sixteen for the month.
So do they, so when they put on their, when they're putting on their time sheet, it would say, it's like, I'm working, I'm training.
Oh, yes, yes, we worked with, um. Or payroll system. HR Butler, they, they can track reserve time for us, if where there's no cost, they would, our reserves would have to do, say, like, Amberton time sheet. They can do, uh, enter time on that program, so that way we can track how many hours.
Okay.
And again, the collaborative side. They, they allow exceptions for law enforcement if they are current, retired, leaving a good standing and so forth, we don't have to do a full. Hiring, which is a psychological, CDSA and physical.
Okay.
Is it, is it possible? To somehow, so in, in section H. By the way, I gotta talk to you about, I mean, this thing looks like it's about twenty-five quid or whatever.
Yeah.
But I minimized it as small as I could, but it's.
So here, here, here's my. Additional requirement, reserve officers will be required, will be required to work a minimum of sixteen hours per month for state of Ohio law and Perry Township Police Department policy. Meetings and required training counts towards monthly hours. Is there a way to better say? That in the sense of. Only one-fourth of the sixteen hours can be associated with that?
With training?
I mean, I, I'm trying to get to the point of, I want you to work more than I want you to train and be in a meeting.
But no, absolutely, but we don't have, we usually one meeting a year. Which is the part of the meeting, um, sometimes the part timers reserve will have one meeting, so. And then you have CPT, there's only twenty-four hours a year that they can do as training, anything else is not what we're gonna support, so. There may be a month again when we do our training Clint Township, there's four hours. That they're going to receive for that month, just by going to Clint Township, but that's required by the state. So there's gonna be months where there's gonna be more training than, than, maybe not more, but it'll be equal, they may have as many hours of training as they do work.
So chat is, is the challenge, I think some of this might be solved by maybe language modifications.
Yeah.
Not necessarily that there's a disagreement with the concept.
No, I mean, the concept.
Section number five up above is also sort of similar, but. If you just wanna be very clear that it's.
Well, I just.
A maximum of training hours, uh, you know, is X per.
Yeah, under the in-service, I, I think, but they have to meet all CPT requirements, which is twenty-four hours. Now that could change because the state can raise it or lower it, so.
Correct.
That's why I didn't put a specific, but this year, next year's supposed to be twenty-four.
But then we would need to revise, I mean, if it did change, we would have to revise this anyway, right?
No, we didn't put a specific, uh, I don't think I put a specific.
Oh, we don't have to like do, no, I know you didn't.
Right, no, it's just whatever the state requires, if the state says we're doing twenty-four hours a year, or sixteen, or thirty, we follow that.
I mean, the only thing outside of that then is their qualifications at the range.
Yeah. Yeah, we do, yeah, qualification, we do quarterly firearms training, but that's usually.
But that's part of the twenty-four hours, or is that above?
No, that's above, the, the quarterly shooting is, uh, usually about two hours a quarter.
Okay. So total, we're looking at a total of thirty-two.
Yeah, yes.
So we don't, I mean, I understand that by not putting in a number, then we don't have to change it in the future. Um, we, but we don't actually need to specify what the requirements are and modify it?
The requirements for.
For the training or, you know, whatever those things are, would it?
No, because.
Consider standard to do that?
Because CPT is mandatory and there, there are other topics that we have to mandate towards, such as use of force, firearms, those kind of things. And depending on the training, the training requirements could be one hour, it could be three hours, depending on what the topic is.
Is there a statement in here that said the board reserves are right, change the. Requirements or the parameters of this program?
There is.
Well, you can change that at any given time.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can change requirements. Depending on what needs to be changed, and, but at the same time, some have to be grandfathered if they're currently here. The reserve program is not something I'm trying to build into, you know, ten officers, what I'm looking for is some specific needs and. I believe that there are specific needs I'm looking for.
So are we voting on anything tonight?
Well, that's massive to approve the program, or if there's more questions, if we can answer those, or.
Can we spend the next two weeks and work on this?
Yeah, uh, what are your questions, I guess, what can I answer?
No, I'm not sure, I just, I don't want us to get, like you said, I do not want us to get back into. Part-time situation where we're trained people to train people, I'm not sure how to get to that.
So, okay, then I, here's kind of a question, when, when it comes to not working. We don't, I don't want our part-time working if they're not needed, when there's shifts that don't need to be filled. I'm not willing to pay them to come in and put it on. So when there are shifts, you know, use, uh, just a.
Were you talking part-time or talking reserve?
Part-time.
Okay.
So if, if there's shifts that, that we don't have to be filled or part-time don't need to work. So if they're not getting hours. And there's not, nothing to be filled, then there's no issue. If there is shifts to be filled and they're not filling them, then there's an issue. And we had a situation a couple of weeks ago. And some of it was a breakdown in communication because we had, um, an officer had a death in the family, they took a few days off, but. We had four shifts that need covered, three on the four shifts were covered by the part-time folks. So there was a lack of communication because. Things weren't, weren't sent out the way they should have been. And I think Lieutenant Forsyth has addressed that. He was given some bad information, so we kinda revamped what we're doing, and now we're making it. We're taking a slower approach because there was breakdown in communications. So.
You wanna just table the vote to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Could we, is there any problem doing that?
No.
Okay.
We can wait till, uh, I won't be here for the next meeting, I should be out of town.
Yeah, but you'll be here for next few days, right?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. I want this program. I'm just, I'm hesitant about something there.
Okay, let me know.
We'll work through that and then we can vote on this the next time we get together, if you're not here, then. The number two will be here.
And if not. Has it, isn't it? Brand update, um, we have been approved, that camera brought the number to lie to me, but we've been approved for ten thousand dollars to purchase a couple more body cameras. Uh, Lieutenant Conkle and I just finished a thirty thousand dollar grant that is being reviewed, we have been approved with revision that will purchase a couple more radios. Batteries for the walkies. There's a handful of things, but it was a thirty thousand dollar grant.
Do these new body cams, are they kind, are they similar to what we have right now?
Yes.
I mean, they're, they're all interchangeable and, yeah, so I've got about two different models.
Nope, they're all the same, they're all the same.
Systems and all that stuff.
We've had, there's been a couple hiccups with them, uh, speaking to Lieutenant Conkle today, we had, um. I think we've had them just under a year so far, and we've already returned three or four, uh, for replacement, just minor issues. So they, so as far as they've been great with, uh, any issues we've had to replace them, so.
Okay.
Um, and again, under old business ballistic shields, last time I, I brought up, we can get ballistic shields for, uh, thirteen ninety-five apiece, they're normally about four thousand. I'm only asking for three. Reason I brought up ten before was this cost, they were a long time deal, but they will still be as low as one to ten or however many we want, so looking to purchase three shields.
This is one per shift, then.
Kind of, yeah, so to speak, they'll be rotated.
I'll make a motion that we purchased, uh, three ballistic shields at a cost of not to exceed thirty-eight eighty-five. Second, vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then under new business, uh, my thanks to Luke, we have added the inner report, I believe it's in the folder for, um, meetings. If you would take a look at that, uh, over the next couple of weeks, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, let us know. If you all are in agreeance with it, at the next meeting, we will publish it and post it on our website and. Somewhere else, but I remember, but it'll be posted on our website as long as you all are good with that. And.
I think he was gonna make, mentioned it in the newsletter.
Oh, that's right, newsletter, and then I think he was gonna, um, make a post on Facebook, it just says it's been published. And that's all I have.
And we're minister.
Hey, um, nothing new on ODOT. Uh, some of you said discussion, we have a meeting with Steve Renner from sanitary engineer's office coming up. Kind of, um. Go back to see who has sewer, who has water, who doesn't. So little bit updates as we go with that. Um, the gentleman from Dublin Builders reached out to me and said that he was gonna be out of town this week, but we can expect his findings with about a week after he gets back. So hopefully, um, by the first meeting in April, I should have. His, uh, his information for you to put to work on that. Um, Luke and I met with the folks from Swoiko today about the consortium. And the recycling, um, break for the trash totes or the recycling totes. I did drop off the comparisons into your boxes, just so you can take a look. What we did ask them to do is the services are really, really, are pretty close for the most part, if not spot on. The one thing that the other entities had that we don't is year-round yard waste. So, um, but for example, the, in Dublin, residents have to get their own trash cans. But we match, just preliminary, we match up a little bit better with Niflin and, um. I can't think of the other township now, and London, um, so far as trash cans and totes being provided and so, so forth. So what we asked, uh, these folks to do is find their best comparisons based on our contract and the needs and wants of all the residents. And they will be presenting those findings for you at the next meeting. That they've pretty much decided what. We can.
We'll talk about that.
We can opt in, um. We can opt into somebody else's contract with an invitation, so that would be. And then, you know, once the end of that particular consortium contract comes to an end, then we just start on our own. So they'll, they'll provide you with all that information, give you a chance to ask questions and that sort of thing, um, at the next meeting.
Blessing.
I'm excited.
Then we, we can do kind of a go-between.
Correct.
Six months, whatever.
Right, right, so, yeah. Um, let's see. Under new business, um, I have a, um. Obviously, Gary Tyack's office is, uh, the current prosecutor and we need to have a law director's resolution naming him as such. So, um. Oops. All right, I was on there. So the first request I have is, um, a motion to approve a resolution appointing Gary Tyack, the Franklin County Prosecutor, Law Director, and dispensing with a second reading and declaring an emergency.
I'll make that move. Second. Vote.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, and then the second piece to this is the actual law director agreement. Um, which kind of goes more into the detail of what the responsibilities are. So, um, I just need a motion to approve the law director agreement, um, between Perry Township and Gary Tyack's office.
Yeah, no, I'll make the motion. Second, vote.
Yes, yes.
Um, as you know, we have been, um, I had had an interview with a lady who's been entrusted in the part-time position. And, um, I got a call from her Friday or Saturday, and she would like to take the job, um, twenty-five hours a week. Uh, starting pay would be twenty-seven fifty-seven. And with a one-year probationary period, um, the start date would be determined, we're gonna have to sit down and work out. You know, what our needs are on that end of things, but I would like for a motion to approve, um, Mary Gallagher to fill the part-time administrative position in Building One. And approve the terms and conditions as stated, and the, um, job offer letter, which I provided you folks last week. Or a couple of weeks ago, twenty-seven fifty-seven starting pay.
I'll make a motion, uh, to hire Mary Gallagher. Second.
Thank you very much.
Vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Vote. Thank you for that time, I would have hated to walk away. Um. I guess I kinda skipped over.
Or just find something with the same name, just so you'd be comfortable.
I know, look, Mary G.
Mary's G, we're just. We're not even gonna get anything, we'll just screenshot her.
This actually is gonna do a strengthless font.
I'm sorry?
I, if you can't read, it always a bad.
I know, I keep like trying to, what are you, I can't see what you, we're all having this.
So, so the screen on these items, I like dropping.
I know.
So. When you.
This is fine.
When you do this. There's gotta be a better one.
Okay, I'll look into it and see.
This one's okay, it's some of the, I think it's the PDFs.
Is it the PDFs?
I don't see Mr. English having a problem, but that's.
Does everybody need classes?
Okay, actually, it's, but the font is too big, so that would suggest that our eyes are.
I think there's just some setting on here.
Yeah, there's gotta be a setting.
A hundred and twenty-five percent, it just needs to be like a hundred or.
I'll call our IT folks and tomorrow. Yeah, and, and I'm sorry, I got everything twisted around here, um, so, our consulting agreement with Joe Smiley. Actually inspired, so, um, and Luke just picked up on that, so, um. I provided you with a, a draft of it, he is fit with all the text, it's still too big, but it's.
The same.
Yeah, yes, um, so I have a motion to approve the consulting agreement with Lance Stride, and she is just mildly retroactive January third, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second, vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And, um. That should be it for me. Are you ready to move on?
First law office.
Okay, uh, to Chief of Sister section, and a question motion for crew creation upon twenty-nine sixteen. For the police body warrant camera grant, having twenty-four, grant number twenty-four, the LEC thirty-one sixty.
I'll make that motion, second, vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And also a request of motion to advance funds from the general fund in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars to fund twenty-nine sixteen. Which will be reversed at the time you receive grant payment.
I'll make that motion, sorry, vote.
Yes, yes.
And request a motion for approval of payroll and disbursements.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Vote.
Yes.
Yes.
A little bit better, you got me down to fifty percent, it's just that.
It doesn't, I mean, I just, even if you want, it doesn't really change anything to payment, no, it doesn't get age. It's, it's, yours is already on fifty percent, which is like fifty percent too good. We've taken a break now to executive session.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I make a motion that we enter to executive session, but pursuant to RC. Uh, one-two-one point two-two G three, uh, to conference of legal counsel concerning disputes involving the township that are subject of. Pending or imminent court action by rule call, vote.
Mister Roper.
Yes.
Mister Emmons.
Yes.
Mister Chaney.
Yes, let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll do, yeah, five minutes.